The May 12th, 2022 City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now called to order. We will begin this evening by receiving any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the commission. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Seeing no one from the public that wishes to speak this evening, we will move to the next item. Next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Next on the agenda are our action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules and Procedure R 2021-18, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. Our only action item this evening is to consider approving the site plan for a new commercial building to be located at 1715 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. Is there a motion? I would, I think we ought to go through the motion and to see how many open questions we have that can't be answered by Becky.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Becky, is there a summary?
Yes, sir. So this is a proposed four-story building to be located at the intersection of 518 and 528. It's going to be behind where the Chick-fil-A and the Chipotle buildings are. It was approved as part of a planned unit development last year. So this is Phase One. It's 106,000 square foot, four-story building. They've got 295 parking spaces and about 80 new trees that they're going to plant. So they are overparked and over landscaped according to our codes.
Okay. Commissioner Sassen.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments?
So yeah, I had a few questions for the applicant. It's disappointing that they're not here. I was, my first concern was how many people are there going to be in this building? I don't know if you know that, Becky. Every question you're allowed to say, "I don't know," because these are not meant for you, these are meant for the applicant. But I will run them by you just in case you do know.
This building doesn't have any confirmed tenants yet, so I don't know what the occupant load would be.
Yeah, and normally there's some metric that I'm not familiar with of how many people per square feet you put, or how many square feet per person, I guess is a better way to put it.
It is, I think. Well, I don't want to give you a number because that's probably wrong. It's in the International Fire Code, so whenever we get the application for the tenants and know what's going in there, the fire marshal will provide the occupant load.
Gotcha. So I, that is really a precursor question to how the traffic is going to work. How are people going to get in and out of this place is what I was mostly concerned about. You know, are they accessing from 528? Are they accessing from 518? Just how much of a difficulty will it be getting in and out? And that's not a fair question for you, but it is a question I had for the applicant. And like I said, I'm disappointed they're not here.
Right. There is an access point on Leisure. There's an access point on 528, and there are multiple access points on 518.
Okay, and when I, when I kind of...
Yes, they're all existing.
Yeah, when I looked at it on the map and tried to match it up, their entrances, one of the ones is existing. It's the Starbucks driveway seems to match up. And the other is the Taco Bell driveway seems to match up as well, just on 528.
Yeah, and the Starbucks, during rush hour, the Starbucks driveway is full. The Taco Bell one is sometimes, sometimes available. The Chick-fil-A one oftentimes gets backed up as well. And so I'm, I'm just a little concerned about how we're getting in and out and what, what that's going to actually look like when we have however many people that are going to be in this building. That is a concern I have. There is a discussion of whether we should table this, and I'll let other people talk about that, but that was my main question.
Commissioner Mann, any?
As per normal, you covered most of my questions. But the, the entrance and exits and maybe the traffic pattern plan, as you mentioned before, I mean Chick-fil-A will back up. You can't get in there. So if people are trying to get to and from work, or trying to get to in and out of that building, that's going to be a problem. I think it's worse on 528 by Starbucks and Taco Bell. The one is Leisure, and I think I remember the people that live back there really didn't want any entrance and exits there. They didn't want that to become a, a major thoroughfare as it will turn to be. So I, I do think it's worth discussing the traffic plan and how that's going to play out for that building. 107,000 square feet is, is legit, so it'd be worth looking at.
Yeah, one other point worth mentioning is you think about people coming from Alvin or from, from that part of Friendswood coming up, taking a right turn in, that's not so bad. But the people coming from I-45, trying to make the, what I call the left turn of death, past Starbucks. I just, I, I would just like to see what the understanding and the plan is.
Just to touch on that, too. It's not that easy coming from Alvin, turning right into Taco Bell or Starbucks to make your way back, which is somewhat alleys right now. And they can't make a left into the Chick-fil-A entrance if they were to turn onto 518. So now they go to the light and they get on Leisure to get in there. Or they go past all that, they turn right, and I'm sorry, I forget the name of the road. Yeah, right, you're right, winding way to Leisure to get around, which is exactly what that neighborhood did not want back there, as we somewhat assured they wouldn't have.
But keep, keep in mind, I, I share your concerns, and I was hoping the applicant would be here to say, "Here's how we're going to address that. Here's how we're going to stagger people. Here's how," you know, that they've thought about this some. But to be candid, I don't know that it's quite honestly in our purview. If the traffic backs up, that's, I believe, completely outside of our purview of this commission. So it's a concern, and I think, you know, it's a legitimate concern because this, we're the ones that are looking at approving this site plan. But its site plan includes driveways, includes entrances. So to me, it's, it's kind of corollary. I'm just making a point that if, if traffic backs up on 528, as a citizen, I'm very concerned about it. As a commissioner, I'm concerned, but I don't know that we could deny it, their site plan. But I would like them to address it for us. That's just an editorial comment from me.
Another, a counterpoint to that, which I, I see where you're going, I just am not 100% sure because it does, it's a site plan, the size of the building, all that will impact the streets. That, I think that does fall under the commission, so.
As a planning commission to ignore what could be a disaster on traffic, I think that would be, that would, I would want to push on that until somebody told me I had to stop.
We pushed on traffic before and told to stop, but okay, that's what I believe. Okay. But I, I share you, don't get me wrong, I share the concern. And I was hoping that they would have, tell us how they're going to address that. Okay, so I'll, Commissioner Perry?
One comment. In the PUD, it talks about an occupancy load of 750 people? So I think that answers your question, in case that's important to you guys.
Which is 750 cars potentially, okay?
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to give you that answer. Look, I appreciate all the concerns you guys are bringing up. We should look at it. I'm just questioning whether or not we should have looked at it when it was here the first time for the PUD approval. Now, I know how that vote went and how it went at city council. So now that I'm sitting here looking at this, I think it complies with everything that was in the PUD. So I would, I would feel obligated to support it.
Understood. Commissioner Kerner?
So I would echo a lot of the, the comments that, that were just made, especially about it complies. And so I would feel obligated, and I'm going to emphasize the word obligated, to support. But I do also share the traffic concerns because I actually live close by to this area, and I know what the traffic is like. And adding that many cars in that space, especially by the way, that entrance that comes right through the drive-through line that is for Starbucks, that line backs up into the oncoming traffic line and, and right away. And so that is always a dangerous area to move through. My fear is that the community is going to experience a lot more traffic incidents in this area as a result of increasing traffic here. And I know that's not necessarily our purview, but I do think it's worthy of noting and having a discussion about what the mitigation steps could be to address that because it is going to be an impact on the community.
And it was discussed when we approved the, the early concept of this. I agree. Thank you. Commissioner Hinckley?
So this is, this is traffic flow related but slightly different. Two issues on that. First is the location of the dumpster. And these are more for the applicant who is not here. But if that dumpster could be moved towards the back of the property instead of the main thoroughfare, I just see that being issues when they're trying to, to unload those garbage, our dumpsters.
Well, I share, I was going to be one of my questions as well. I only interrupt you to say one thing. I kind of stepped it off on my drawing that I had, and it looks to be, unless I measured it wrong, about 160 feet. So that's pretty far from dumpster location. And I, so I was going to ask the same question. Why'd you pick there?
To the building.
To the building, sorry. Sorry, thank you.
That's another good point.
I just, that's just a long way past a thoroughfare. We're talking about, you know, the main, one of the main thoroughfares into that. Okay, anyway, I just, I just was, I'm sure they thought about it. I would like to think they have a great answer, so. Okay, keep, continue, sorry.
Well, so along with that, on that main thoroughfare is that when the applicant was here last time, we had discussed that traffic flow through there in ways he was going to mitigate that. And I, I do not necessarily see anything on this plan that would, would do that, whether it be speed bumps, stop signs.
He did mention that. I, I was going to bring that up, that we did discuss traffic and flow the first time. So it's not that we're all, never discussed it before and we're all sudden shocked.
That's true. Agreed.
And the last point on that is that the, the additional entrance towards the top of the drawing, it'd be good to see an overlay of the neighboring property to know exactly where that enters the Taco Bell.
I, I measured it off and it looks like it lines up. I mean, Becky, you may have a, you have already looked at it. But I think that, that one kind of the, in the north side lines right up with Taco Bell's driveway.
Yes, sir, it does. Those are existing access easements that were part of that before this development was done. So where the Taco Bell and all that is, those access easements kind of dead-ended into this property. So they did line them up.
Okay, and another question I have is that considering this Phase One, and maybe I'm wrong, but that would give me concern that the retention pond is being considered Phase Two. And is that, by being Phase Two, is it kind of being pushed to the side?
So the detention, I can, I can answer that one. The detention pond is, I would say, on hold right now between the city and the Drainage District and the developer. We're trying to work out some logistics with the location of those amenities that are promised without being in the way of maintenance for the pond. So to help them move forward, we took the building because the building's ready to go, and then we'll bring the Phase Two back whenever that's worked out with the Drainage District.
Okay, so general answer is he, he has not pushed it off. It's being, it's in technicalities right now.
Yes, no, his plans, I did not include them, but his plans have everything that was promised in the PUD. The trails, the benches, the, the trees, everything is on there. But then the Drainage District was like, "Oh, we may need some more room," you know, to maneuver. So we're trying to work through those, those hurdles.
And then the only other things are just two comments that maybe could be passed along to him. Is that the, on the landscape plan, they, they misspelled shrubs. And on this drawing here, they put in raised planter instead of planter.
Oh, okay. I did not see that, thank you.
Good for me.
Commissioner Clark?
Just a couple of things. Another traffic-related thing. You know, those of us who are used to operating our vehicles in here, you know, are going to be relatively comfortable with the traffic flow since it's going to be the same as what it is now, you would think, anyway. But people coming from out, outside, they're not even going to know where this building is. You know, they're going to be coming down 528 from 45, and they're going to pass Taco Bell. There's no signs, right? You know, they have to know to turn into this unmarked on the street. I'm going to call it an on the streets.
It's an easement.
There's no signs.
They, they're going to feel like they're going to order to Taco Bell, and that would not become naturally to them, right? I, I get you.
So anyway, I, you know, I think that depending on what the businesses are, and of course, last time this was presented, it was not called a medical building, which it is now. So that doesn't necessarily mean patients, I guess, but it could be other things, research or something. But anyway, I am concerned for the, the outsiders who come in and try to figure out how to get into this property. And every time one of them makes a wrong turn, it's going to, you know, snowball in effect. The other thing is technical related to the drawing and all that. I find it really hard to believe that these drawings meet the standards since there is no location that I can find on this thing to orient me on a map. There is no street name, there is no accessway.
Becky's about to tell you.
So I'd have to go back and look. The, in the backup material on the cover sheet, it should have a vicinity map. It, it may not.
Not, well, you didn't, you didn't send that to us.
Okay. Yes, sir, I did crop these down so you could see just the site, and it did not occur to me it was going to, you weren't going to be able to orient it.
So just for clarity's sake, the, the top access is the one by Taco Bell, I guess? And the bottom one is the one that comes through Starbucks?
That, that's what I finally, that's what I guessed, finally.
Yeah, so the bottom, the bottom drive where that dumpster is, that is what is currently the, referred to as the raceway, going from Leisure to Starbucks. During the PUD discussion, the applicants stated that orienting the building facing that road would create a slowdown of traffic naturally because pedestrians would be crossing. But as far as physical traffic mitigation, that is something that, I mean, we could discuss with him. Speed bump signs, those things.
Slowing down traffic with pedestrians.
I may not have worded that, but that, yes.
So those, those are the additional observations I've got. Thanks.
Okay, well, I'm going to just go through mine. Some of these, I think Becky, you can answer some. I just want to make sure it's in the record that, that we've thought about it. That you did say that it's got 295 parking spaces and 290 were required. Did I read that right?
Yes, sir, I believe the PUD said 290.
Okay, okay. That's already been asked. We've talked about the dumpster. The, the building seems to be surrounded primarily by community shopping zoning, right?
This property and then...
Predominantly, not all of it.
Correct.
But that it's got Office Park adjacent, it's got, and shown on the map was multifamily residential low? The church, I think.
Yes, the property behind, so north of this, is it's zone multifamily residential low, but it's being utilized by a church?
Correct. And then single-family residential. I was just going to rely upon you that far as screening trees, we don't need, do we need any? You've looked at it, I know.
That is part of it, and this is really teeny tiny. So the very top right-hand corner, you can't see it, but there is an eight-foot fence and a 10-foot landscape buffer against the multifamily residential, and it does extend along the pond all the way to Leisure.
So there's no fencing in between it and other community shopping? But between the, the residential zones, it's got opaque fencing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that, I, I saw some of that. I just wanted to confirm. I, I read it right? Okay. And I asked that, the, the trees around the retention pond. Because there were some, on the lighting plan, it did show the trail around the pond.
Yes, sir.
And it showed the, the lighting. But the trees, their layout, you're saying is still up in the air, and so we're going to see more, we're, we're going to see something more. It's going to come back before us?
Yes, sir, it will come back. On the photometric plan, I think it did show...
Roughly.
Oh, it showed a little bit. I think those are the existing, so this, this isn't even the proposed.
Okay, okay, but it showed, it showed the, it showed the, what, the granite walking path, crushed granite walking path around it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, but I just wanted to make sure we're going to see it again for the trees. And so we'll see more about that. Because I did, what I didn't see in that walking path plan was anything from Regatta Commons itself, like by Chick-fil-A to get to there. But, but that's, we're going to see more of that later. That's, this is not our, our time to look at that. And the top of steel of the building on the drawings that you sent us showed 63 feet?
Yes, sir, the PUD allowed 70, and they're going to 63.
Okay, okay. Let me just double-check, but I think that hits all of mine. Oh, one last one on lighting. So, and again, we may see, we maybe, we're going to, it was in this drawing because the, the lighting plan was all on one drawing. We may see it again, but you know, I was a little concerned about the lighting plan and the types of lights that were going to be used. Again, an applicant question. Because I'm, as we get near those residences, I'm, I just don't want to overlight them. I know, I saw on the lighting plan that they've looked at it, they've looked at the illumination levels. But are these up lights or these down lights? You know, I just didn't understand what the lighting plan, although, but we're going to see that again as well.
The, so the photometric plan comes to you guys, and you would be able to ask the applicant as to what those lights are. The details are in the, the big set of plans on one of the electrical sheets. I can look at that in the meantime as well.
Okay, but the photometric information for the pond area, the amenities for this PUD, that we're going to see again?
Yes, sir.
We're going to actually see that in detail later? Okay, I, then, then I don't need to talk about it anymore. I was just concerned about people, you know, lights getting shined into those people's backyards.
Right.
I had asked that question once before on a previous development. And we don't really have a good way to gauge from these plans what that, we'll call it a bleed-over light is from a horizontal perspective. So I was worried about that in some of the places where we have community shopping centers going in and residences, and I couldn't.
But the photometric plan should tell us what the, at the boundary, at the boundary, they should be able to tell us what that lighting level is.
But it tells you what it is at the, at the ground level. Like the lumens on the surface. It doesn't tell you how much light is being sent horizontally.
Into somebody, adjacent property.
Exactly.
Okay, good point. Good point. Well, then I stalled and asked all my questions, hoping that the applicant would, would show up. We have a motion and a second. Does anybody else want to make any other motions? Or we want to vote on this? I'm just asking. I'm, I'm not going to dictate, obviously.
So how does this work? Can, can one of us motion to, to defer any action on this until we have our questions answered by the applicant?
Wouldn't have to be a revised motion?
Yeah, or is that a revised motion?
So you can, you can move to postpone the action on the item until a date certain, or not to exceed a certain time? So, and then you can take it up at that time.
Becky, do you have a sense for the urgency associated with this from the applicant? Because this is a wonderful building. It is good for Friendswood. I mean, all we've been doing is picking at the bad things, and there's a lot of good things associated with this.
They, they have been issued site work permits, so they are on the ground working right now.
I do know that they've put water in and they're, they're, they're doing a lot of the land work. And I think the steel is coming in August is what I heard. And so I'm, I'm guessing if we spend two weeks trying to get them to come, it won't defer things. But I wanted to get your opinion on that, too. I just...
Right. No, sir, they, like I said, they've been issued site work permits.
Which will keep them busy for a while.
With the, with the caveat that you're kind of working at your own risk because you still have to go through the commission and, you know, get to permitting. But delaying two weeks would not impact the current work. I think that would be okay.
I mean, because it doesn't have to be the developer himself. He could send his engineer. There's other people that, that are on this project that could come and, and answer our questions. It seems like we've all had questions for the applicant that you obviously can't answer, all of them.
My guess is they will watch this fascinating YouTube and get a sense for what the questions are.
This is a good project, but if, if he's in, in an urgent need, he should have been here.
That's fair.
And you just never know, is there some emergency? We can't, we can't say that it just wasn't for lack of care, and we just don't know that.
Right. I, I don't believe tabling it or postponing it would impact the progress.
Would be an undue impediment. Okay.
I, I do want to reiterate that, that this is an awesome building. I do think it's good for Friendswood. That, that is a great point. We, we kind of went immediately and started attacking all the questions that we had. But it is, it is good, and I, I do want to ask questions, and I think it'd be great for Friendswood.
Yeah, agreed. I, I concur as well.
Motion to approve, to defer action on this item until the applicant is present to answer it. Can I do that?
Do I need to remove mine first?
Or do we need to?
No, that's fine. You can make a motion to postpone until maybe two weeks.
The next, the next meeting?
Just until the next meeting or when the applicant is available to answer a question?
Second.
Applicant or their representative?
So we have a motion and, and a second to delay this matter until the next regular meeting or until such time as the, as the applicant or its representative shows up. Is that what I understand? All in favor of that? Okay, that motion passes? Okay. Okay, our final agenda topic is communications, and we will start with announcing the upcoming Planning and Zoning Commission meeting dates. Becky? Are you, okay, how about if I, since looking at your face, I can, I have them right here.
Sorry, I was...
No, no. Our next Planning and Zoning Commission regular meetings would, would normally be scheduled on Thursday, May 26th, and then Thursday, June 9th.
We skipped an item.
We skipped an item. Uh-oh.
5A.
Oh, well then, I completely skipped it then. Received layers and updates and, huh? No. Okay, who's got that one?
That's me.
Then, please. It wasn't on my agenda in my head, so sorry.
In your defense, the city secretary's office has been moving our agenda items around. So this is probably different than how it normally comes out. Liaison updates, do you want to start with those?
No, I re, hold on. Oh, I see. I, I, you're right, they did move it. Okay, well, so then we will start with communications and updates by the commission, commissioners. Does any, I'll, Dick?
Nothing for today.
Travis?
The Drainage District meeting, they spent most of their time on League City. But this one, there's a couple of things that they're really working on there. But they were excited to hear that we will continue to send a representative. And we got a lot of nods and smiles that, that, that we're going to do that, so. And, and that, that was it. Nothing else to report from there.
Okay. I'll, I'll wait to the end. Rich?
Yeah, I, I got to attend the city council meeting, but I'll let you talk about that, and nothing else.
I was not planning to, so please, I didn't come prepared to talk about that, so.
Oh, okay. I guess I wasn't...
You're on the spot.
Yeah, right, exactly. Yeah, right. I don't know anything that really was significant for us. The Garden Home District thing was already approved. No, was that, was that Reddit's final? Thank you, Becky. Becky's coding me. Yes, so the Garden Home District thing that we worked so hard on and, and approved is got, is finally into law now. I don't think there was anything else that came from us to them.
Nothing controversial, I don't believe. That's what I, sort of I remembered, so your memory is better than mine.
Yeah, there was something controversial, but I probably won't talk about that, so we'll go on.
Okay, Kathy?
Nothing for me.
Marcus?
Nothing from my liaison status, but I will say I would support further discussion around light pollution. And also, since we're getting a lot of this, I know we can't dictate construction material, but it always worries me when we build four-story buildings with a lot of glass and we don't consider reflection and how that's going to impact either residents or other businesses. It wouldn't have changed how I voted on this property, but it's something for us to consider. If I can help, let me know. Just planting that seed.
I was going to say, in talking about our liaison assignments and the Drainage District. Becky, I guess, can I enlist your help? And I know your, your schedule is pretty full with Aubrey being out. But we ought to sit down and try to come up with a schedule, so on the Drainage District's meetings. Since they meet twice a month, and we have one more coming up quickly, we ought to sit down and try to come up and propose a schedule. Can...
Yes, sir, we can do that.
Okay, I, I'll be glad to help you as, as always. Let's just you and I get together and we'll figure it out.
Okay, we can take care of that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I had, I had nothing else on communications for me. So we can go to B, I believe.
To finish this one up, at the city council meeting, they did the first reading. Uh, to finish this one up, at the city council meeting, they did the first reading of the drainage easement abandonment on Falling Leaf. Uh, that was approved, so second reading was the other, that's the other item. So they'll do second reading June, um, but yes, the Garden Home District was second reading and approved. And then staff did have a meeting with the developer two days later, and we got to tell them about our new garden home rules. So that was exciting. Yes, sir, the next regular meetings are gonna be Thursday, May twenty-sixth, and then Thursday, June ninth.
All right, and I'll, just, just to be clear, um, I think I will be out for that, uh, May ninth, June ninth meeting, and you will be as well, correct?
Yes.
Just giving you a heads-up. Okay, uh, with that, we don't have our representative for, from city council this evening. Becky, you have anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Karen, anything from you that you'd like to pass along?
With the actual, with the election, uh, council's gonna hold a special canvas, uh, meeting coming up on the eighteenth. They'll canvas the results, how that would affect, um, the things that you all do, is that instead of two readings of the ordinances, um, if there's a public hearing required, there will only be, need to be one reading of the ordinance before the city council.
If, any, if there's nothing else, then the May twelfth, twenty-twenty-two Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting is now adjourned.